All right, it's 6 o'clock, Wednesday, August 3rd, and we'll call the Board of Health meeting to order. And the first item on the agenda is Two Pilgrim Road, meet with Xenon Consulting Engineers to discuss requests of local upgrade approvals.
Uh, Will Connelly, Xenon Consulting Engineers that are up here. The site is Two Pilgrim Road. It's an 8,000 square foot lot with a three-bedroom dwelling.
Will, could I just interrupt you for one sec?
Yeah.
I almost forgot the housekeeping thing. Is anyone else recording this besides me? Cam? No one? All right, great. Thanks, continue on.
Um, there's an existing three-bedroom dwelling and a failed septic on-site. We are proposing a 1,500 gallon septic tank and two 40-foot long, two trenches. And, um, obviously the main constraints here, the size of the lot and onsite well. So we're requesting little upgrades from the setback between the crawl space and the proposed septic tank, uh, from 10 feet to 3 feet. Essentially the only place the tank can fit over there behind the house where the existing plumbing comes out. Requesting a reduction from the setback between the crawl space and, uh, um, the leaching field. As you can see, that's again, the only place we can really fit the system, um, while keeping it on the property. Uh, we're also requesting a reduction between the setback between the property line and the leaching field. This is just to keep the leaching fields outside the 100-foot buffer from the well. Um, and then reduction from the number of deep holes from two to one. Just given the, the size constraints, the law, we were only be able to dig one hole. Um, so if there's any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Um, yeah, I didn't see too much to really question on this one, um, my point of view. How would you guys?
No other place you can put it?
Yeah, I'm, I'm the same. You're outside the wells and you put the smallest design system you could kind of fit to where it had to go. Um, I didn't see any other issues.
Well, there's lines all around it. There's trenches and you don't need to want any of those anymore, but...
Yeah, but I did actually just talk to Jamie on this one yesterday, um, just asking about the trenches and he explained to me why.
Yeah, they're...
It's the only thing that fit to be outside.
Not ideal, but it's pretty much...
It's, it's the only thing that goes there.
Yep.
He, he couldn't get a field in and, um, that's what Title V recommends to also is trenches still to stay. So that's, I didn't have any other questions on it. I believe just the abutters are the reason, another main reason if anybody...
Is there any abutters here for this?
Do we have all the cards?
We did get the green cards.
Yep, we do.
I'm good with it.
I'll make a motion, we approve the five local upgrade, um, variances requested for Two Pilgrim Road in Lakeville, Mass.
Second? Any discussion? All's in favor? Aye.
Aye.
All right, thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Next on the agenda is Three Island View, discuss the removal of seasonal deed restriction.
Okay. Yep, you can come up to us at that table right there.
Uh... Can I just speak to this thing for a second?
Sure. Yeah, so apparently they had a seasonal deed restriction put on back in 1999.
That is correct, yep.
Um, because they had a tight tank, um, that is no longer a requirement anymore for seasonal. They have a well, a year-round well.
Yep.
They have a tight tank that's perfectly compliant, um, so there's no issue.
So we can take the, the seasonal off, but then we're gonna have to add a, uh, no increase from a two-bedroom on top of it?
Correct, it is two deed restrictions. One, it's one deed restriction, but it says a two-bedroom seasonal, so you'll still have to have a two-bedroom deed restriction, but they can remove the seasonal part of it, so they'll have to redo it, so you'll still have some...
Yep, that's fine. My question, I think, and it's probably not relevant, well, it is relevant, but being a tight tank, why is there a restriction on how many bedrooms you could have? What if you had it pumped out every day? For, for that reason, I'm guessing, because people could just put in 10 bedrooms if they want.
So the idea is, um, you can, right now, you can switch, um, if you had a, uh, tight tank to a, um, a leaching field at some time.
Okay.
You could, you could have that modification. Um, so if you went from a two-bedroom to a three-bedroom and say, hey, we just got a tight tank, and then you went to a switch to a leaching field, okay, you, you, that's an increase in flow. And in that area, in a zone one, there is no increase in flow. That's just how it was. I mean, today, you can't even get a house in, in, um, the, the zone A, so I mean, um, that, that's why they have it. So even though it is going to a tight tank and it really shouldn't matter, um, you could change in the future, and that's why the deed restrictions.
Okay. That's fine.
Okay.
But now back to the original. So how do we get that?
I, what is happening is we decided to put our house up for sale, not knowing the change. Um, our realtor found out that we could do this.
Once they checked the deed.
Once they checked the deed. And, um, you spoke to somebody at the Board of Health.
Oh, yeah, maybe still.
And she said, yeah, you now, congratulations, you now have a year-round house.
Yeah, DEP changed that a couple of years ago, so...
Okay.
So we can vote that tonight. Who does the paperwork at? Do they bring it to us to get, uh, approved or recorded, or do we do it?
No, they have it recorded. So the, the deed restriction you have is basically the similar, but just the word seasonal will be taken out of it.
Okay.
Everything else will be pretty much the same, a two-bedroom. Um, so you would just do a, a similar deed restriction like that. And then it has to get, um, recorded at the, um, Plymouth without a registry deed.
Okay, how does that get taken off? Do I have to have a lawyer or somebody do that, or do you guys have any idea of the processes?
I mean, you actually, you, you can get a lawyer. I mean, um, you know, there, there are a number of ways to do it. There are probably other people who can do it too. I mean, you can actually take it down and, and at the registry of deeds and do it yourself.
Okay.
Um, a lawyer will do it, but obviously they're gonna charge you for that.
Sure.
But we can send you the actual form like that.
Oh, that'd be great.
Yeah, for the deed restriction.
And we can, and we can send you what's on there now, and then all you have to do is take seasonal off of it and leave everything else alone. That'd be fine. That's the only thing that's holding us up, I think.
Right, because when they do the research, it shows seasonal and they have to list it through MLS as seasonal, and people are backing off.
Yep.
Wanting to see it for that reason. Okay, so we just wanted to...
So if you could send us the form or whatever? A tight tank's still gonna turn some people off, but it needs a year-round.
Yeah, no, it's true.
It's gonna be expensive if you have a lawyer.
We never lived there year-round anyway, and again, I think it's the way they want to present it, that if somebody wanted to do whatever is necessary to live year-round, they, they're able to do it.
We do have requirements for them to be inspected each year too.
Yearly.
Yeah, they, they have that.
Yeah, yeah, we do it every year.
Oh, yes, yep.
Now, do they have to take a vote from us to the registry that shows we agreed to take this off? Do you know that one, Ed?
I don't know. And then that's when we can fill the paperwork out.
Yeah, so, so it's coming from the Board of Health, like, it, it has our stamp on it saying, you know, this is now no longer seasonal, so when they do it, it'll be...
And that'll be the paperwork you'll send to us.
Correct, we'll, we'll have a letter saying that this...
We vote on it tonight, they can do the paperwork, stamp it, and then take it.
Yeah, they can bring it to us, we can, they can go to the registry.
Yeah.
Yep, yeah. Okay. That sounds great. All right, does anybody else here for this?
No, I don't think so.
Okay.
Thank you. I'll make a motion that we remove the seasonal restriction off of, how many glasses?
Three Island View.
Three Island View, um, leaving the two-bedroom, uh, deed restriction on it.
Second? Any discussion? All's in favor?
Aye.
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 Sir?
Sir.
Thank you very much.
Appreciate it. Hello. I only got one good eye now. I get a cataract this morning, I can't see for sure.
All right, next on the agenda is a joint meeting with the Planning Board, Conservation Commission, I believe Open Space here too, right? David? Yep. Uh, to discuss the proposed open space residential development.
Hey, how you doing?
Um, if people wanna speak, um, there are several microphones.
Yeah, one, two.
Yeah, do you guys want to call your board?
Yes.
Do you want me to call Conservation? I just came up to a microphone, just to make sure I correct.
Oh, fine, sure.
All right, so this is a joint meeting, and we did post it through the Planning Board as well as Conservation Commission, so at this time, I'd like to call the, this meeting of the Planning Board to order. Uh, we have President Michelle McHeckren, Peter Conroy, and Jack Lynch, and myself, Chairman. Uh, and then secondly, is another action I'd like to take, I'd like to call the Conservation Commission meeting to order, uh, which we have Fred Frodoma, Joe Chamberlain, Josh Farady, Nancy Yates, and John LeBlanc, present. So, being that both of those meetings are called to order, I'd like you guys to proceed, uh, I think... There's opens, there's open space, just your ones.
Yeah.
I'd like to have a forum, I don't know if it's officially posted.
Yeah, Open Space was not officially posted, but I contacted, uh, Board of Health, asked if Open Space could participate.
Yeah, it's a public meeting.
All right, so just to start this off, so, I, we've been going back and forth discussions with this, and, um, you know, the preliminary discussion we had, there was, you know, just one member of different boards. Um, I knew we were still gonna have to come back here to our, to our full board and discuss it, and, um, the biggest thing from that was, like, I think all three were in agreement after that meeting that, that this needed a little bit more work, and I think my biggest thing, because I, I mean, I am in favor of something like this, but, um, you know, Bob had addressed it, he'd asked questions of, and sent emails and texts to multiple people and wasn't getting the answer as to why it was going through this process the way it was. And, um, then the Planning Board meeting that you guys had before our last Board of Health meeting, I believe it was, um, I think some of those questions, they kind of answered with the back and forth was, I think, if we had maybe all got together and hashed this out from the beginning, we probably wouldn't be here right now. You know what I mean? So, and all of us had some issues more, um, with it at different points along the way. But, um, Bob had the biggest things to, so I'll turn it over to him first.
Okay, I just wanna, I don't always come across, most of yous know me, I don't always come across the, as I hope I do, but I don't have a problem with open space. I actually at, what was it, at the, uh, high school, maybe two meetings ago, somebody was standing out front getting signatures, talking about open space, and I talked to them for quite a while, saying, "Cluster Zone is the only way you're gonna get, get it without having to get money from the people, the residents of the town to pay for it." And, 'cause it's a good system. Um, and I'm in favor of it, but some of my concerns are, and I'll, uh, yeah, Mark, I'll give you one, I only got a couple, but you can pass it around, I'll try to show people. My biggest concern is the physically, of it not fitting the way it's drafted. Um, if you have a 100-foot wide lot by 300-foot wide lot, you put a 100-foot circle around your well, so that takes 200 feet. Um, you know, for this to work, it needs to be everybody's backyard perks, everybody's front yard can put the well or vice versa. You got a couple of people that, you know, and we've all, you guys are on boards, we've all seen the soil logs from all the different perk tests and drainage and stuff, and you can be 50 feet away and have garbage. So all it takes is a couple of people, they don't perk rate there, and if they're the first one to get in the subdivision and they put their septic in the front and the well in the back, it, it literally blocks out other septics. I mean, I had this done, and you probably can't see it, but, and I didn't even exaggerate, the engineers could've turned this whole thing red with wells at worst-case scenario. All the red circles are well radiuses, so if just a couple of people move their wells to the front or to the back, you see how many lots can't put septics in anymore. So, so on this sized lot, you have to have, first, in the first place, you have to make it work. If we had town water, no problem, works all day long, leave it exactly the way it is. It doesn't. We don't though, in most places. And if you just wanna just start off with saying if you have town water, that's fine. If you don't have town water, a lot of the other ones in towns I reviewed, they actually call out, in the open space, if you wanna put a public water supply well in, that that's an allowed use in there. If you put a public water supply well way down here, now the people can put septics anywhere they want. That's one way to get around it. Or you could put in common septic systems. We can allow those now, DEP started letting us allow those a few years ago. So you could put in a common septic, then you can put wells wherever you want. So, so there are options to get it done. The problem is, and I've talked to a couple of attorneys, my problem with that is, and a lot of you guys know, some places that have treatment plants, people are getting billed exorbitant amounts of money, you have people that, um, on private roads, um, and a lot of people just don't pay, and all an association can do is put a lien against their house. Well, when a septic system or public water supply fails, and everybody gotta kick in 15 grand, if some of the people don't have the money, we're putting a lot of the other residents in a bad place, 'cause they don't have the money to fix it. And, and, and they might not just not pay it, 'cause they, they might not just have it, maybe they, you know, they just don't have the money at that time. So, the only way the government's got around doing that is a super lien, which normally falls on condos. And why condos were going bankrupt years ago, and actually John manages them, he can probably talk more articulate than I can about condos, but a super lien goes in front of the banks. So if somebody doesn't pay their fees, or doesn't pay a betterment, you notify the bank, the bank pays it, 'cause they don't want the house to go to foreclosure. And they cover it, and then they work out an agreement with the homeowners. As far as I know, a condo is the only way to put a super lien on something, except, um, the attorney just told me the other day that they could do a, um...
Covenant or something?
Yeah, uh, what did he call it? This receivership or something like that. Was it a receivership? No. It'll come to me in a minute, I'm getting old. But he thinks you might be able to do it through that, but he wasn't sure, and he said we should have Town Council look into it, because, Jesus, I should remember that. Anyway, I'm sorry, but...
Proprietorship?
Huh? Proprietorship. So he thinks that the laws changed that a proprietorship can put super liens on stuff. So if we permitted these with any of those other two options, from town water is not an issue, either a public water supply or a common septic, if we make them become proprietorships, he believes the states now allowing those to be super liens. If that's the case, and that's why it would be great to have a lawyer, if that's the case, then that's another way to get around it. But as far as, years ago, Lakeville had three-quarter acre lots. We give variances to them every meeting. I mean, they made them bigger, because, you know, even if every backyard parked, every well went in the front, that's this time. When they start failing, we're gonna have to give, you know, just like we just did, we're gonna have to give, um, you know, variances to wells and, and stuff like that, that we really, if we can, if we see that coming, because they saw it coming 40 or 50 years ago when they changed the lot size, I'd prefer to do this in a way that we don't have to do that in 15 years or so when the, when the, uh, you know, they start failing. So, so it, it came across, I think, to a lot of people that I'm against these, and I'm actually not, but I just, I don't wanna leave residents in 15 years hanging, you know, I wanna make sure it's done properly, so that we don't, so those people, if they have to come up with 150 grand to do a new leaching field, if it's a common septic system, they're able to get the money for that. You know what I mean? So those are some of my concerns. And, um, I'd love to work with you guys and to try to, I think we all do, you know, come up a way to do this. It, and it's just really that, you know, you guys see the soil logs, all our boards see soil logs, it never, just down a straight road, all the backyards, they all get great perks. The first few hundred feet will be great, it'll be junk, you follow the vein around, then you come back, you might hit it again. You, you can't plan on every road just having perfectly straight, this all perks great, and that all perks great, and approve a procedure to move forward that way, with the assumption that we never see happen in the real world, so... And that's, that's what I have to say. I mean, there's a bunch of different ways that we can probably start moving forward, but, um, that's, that's, those are my concerns.
And I think some of these properties that people are looking at to do some of this stuff may be difficult to begin with going in. I mean, I know one particular property that's probably thinking of something like this has a ton of ledger ready to begin with, and, you know, just, it's not just the stuff that's exposed that's around, it's all, 'cause all kinds of stuff hiding just underneath the surface too. We say, you never know until you get out there digging holes. Um, but yeah, and I think some of the earlier stuff that we talked about was like the nitrogen loading stuff, I think that was fine going in. Um, and, you know, how to, you know, and just keep an agriculture out of the open space, 'cause that affects the nitrogen loading, I think we were good with that stuff. Um, and Derek, do you have anything else to add?
Yeah, I'm just, like, to say, yeah, I'm, I'm exactly with Bob on him, on a 30,000 square foot lot. I mean, I think without a well or a, uh, central septic system, I, I don't know how you would do it. Um, especially taking into factor, um, some of these subdivisions now have underground drainage for their roof drains, uh, depends how the subdivision is designed, which would have to go in the lot, and the separation from that to the septic system to the house. Um, some houses might want a swimming pool, and they're just not gonna have the room with a septic in a reserve area and drain gutters on a, on this sized lot. Um, and also, anything over a three-bedroom on this would have to go to DEP for approval, um, through nitrogen loading, 'cause they don't meet it on a 30,000 square foot lot.
I think they had that crafted already in there, that a four-bedroom would be 40,000.
Okay, that you'd have to correct if you went to four-bedroom, and if you wanted a five, it would have to be 50,000.
Yeah. Uh, at this time, I'd like to ask the Town Planner, Mark President, to come up. We've had a lot of conversations, but unfortunately, it wasn't in this forum with us all together. Um, a lot of the folks that actually acted to try and bring this together, uh, I think Mark brought to our attention at our last meeting, that some of the, the efforts actually create a few conflicts within the bylaw, so I'm sure he'll wanna talk, talk to us about that now. Go ahead, Mark.
All right, well, to address the concerns that you guys brought up, um, so originally, I discussed, um, a variety of things back and forth with Ed about septic design, our location, minimum lot size. Uh, we tried initially to stay away from doing like an aggregate plan, um, trying to keep it simple. We, um, if we did 10,000 square feet per bedroom, which we, we've settled on 30,000, so that, uh, the smallest house could be a three-bedroom house, and it would be restricted on a 30,000 or a four-bedroom on a 40. Um, we also had written in there, in the, uh, the one that went to town meeting, that the locations of wells and septic on the definitive plan for the cluster would have to be approved by the Board of Health, so that there are, maybe not, it goes exactly 10 feet from the property line in the front corner, but in that general front corner areas that you maintain the right distances between septics. And, and you're correct, not all the lots are gonna be configured perfectly, but not all the lots are gonna be 30,000 square feet minimum. And there'll be odd shapes, and they'll be configured partially based on soil conditions, you know, a developer's gonna have to perk all those lots before he gets final approval, so, um, so if the lot's not perking, there's ledge three feet under, he's gonna keep going till he finds a place, um, where he can cite a system, or he's, that lot's not gonna, he's gonna have to, I, you know, combine it with the next two, split it, and he'll get one less on the cluster. So, um, that's kinda all part of the thing. Ideally, if we had town water, that would eliminate, like you say, eliminate a huge amount of things. And, um, and I think that would be perhaps something, we were, again, trying to not complicate things, just everybody have their own well, their own septic, first time through, and see, you know, if it ever got to the by, you know, again, it's never been passed here in Lakeville, and so we've thought if we keep it relatively simple, that people can understand it, the average citizen will vote for it, and then if it seems like builders and developers wanna use it on some bigger projects or differently, that, uh, you know, to put in, as you mentioned, a, a public water supply to feed the subdivision, um, you know, we could amend it at a future town meeting. So, again, once you start getting into those common systems, you end up with potential problems and stuff like that, um, as far as collections. But the bigger the development, the easier it is, so, so an association leans one, it's not that problematic, 'cause they're a smaller piece of a bigger association, so...
Yeah, but if you had a dozen lots, and that's, two people don't have the money, that's a lot of money.
That's a lot of money, that's correct, so...
And I didn't mention that, that, as you're saying now too, which is correct, I think I said at our last meeting, I mean, if they put in, 'cause you never know, right? You drill a well, we get them all the time, they, they go down 500 feet and they decide to put another well in 50 feet away, because they're not getting any water. So, so the first run-through, you'd almost have to have all the wells in, and all the septic's designed, so you know it's gonna fit, because, yeah, that language said, yeah, we approve it, but we don't know what the guy next door is doing, people only bring in one septic and one lot at a time. And we, you know what I mean? They can't be the one to decide, oh, well, that guy already designed his septic over there, you can't put your well there anymore. I mean, you know what I mean? So it has to, they'd have to, um, I talked, one of the engineers I spoke to said, one of the towns has that, that they have to prove every lot, they have to have the wells in, prove they have a good well and a septic design. They don't have to put the septic in, but they have to have a septic design, and he said that town let them do a percentage of lots at a time, so they didn't have to put in, if it's 30 lots, they didn't have to put in 30 wells. But, but surely doing that, you don't know if you're gonna hit a well. And, and then, now, somebody bought a lot, and now they can't put their well where they want, and the other two wells are already in, and the other septics are in, and they can't move it. I mean, I'm just trying to think of the people who buy these, and then they come into us looking for variances and waivers on new construction, which we can't give, and, and again, I'm, I'm, you know, if you had town water, if you have a tough public water supply, or whatever is, however we come up with that, or they all prove them, they put in the wells for X amount of lots, and the final approval on those lots isn't granted until they prove to us they have a well and a septic system. You could do that, but then down the road, you're probably still gonna be given variances in 15, 20 years, when this septic fails and they have to do it. But right now, um, do I understand correctly, do these still two have 100-foot, um, separation from the back of the lot to the property line? Or do these, or do these lots go right to the prop, current property lines?
Um, they would, they would go to the property line, yeah. I mean, they could, I mean, you could also, you could also wrap the open space around some of the lots or the entire subdivision.
Yeah, one of the towns I read, I think it was Middleborough, they have that, they have a 100-foot buffer around all the abutters, which would give you a little bit more room in the back if the septic system, you know, you can't put the septic of the well on, but you could use that land as your radiuses or your setbacks, 'cause you still, you know what I'm saying? That'd give you more room to push your well farther, maybe one way or the other.
Yeah.
Um, so those are the things that, you know, I just, I, I just, one of those solutions, unless people have better ones than I do, 'cause we're the ones, you know, the first guy comes in and his well didn't go in the right place, and, you know, and now it's screwing up the, he, but he built his house first, and now the next-door neighbor can't put his septic where it's supposed to go. That's the kind of stuff, and he says, well, I put it where I was supposed to, but we didn't hit water, so I moved it over 25 feet and we hit water. And what are we gonna do? Condemn his house? Are we gonna, like, it, it's gonna get complicated when you get into the weeds. And the concept, like I've told everybody, that's the only way to get open space for free. You, you give the developers, you put a carrot on a stick and say, you do this, you'll build half the road, you'll save a fortune, you'll have to do half the drainage, you're gonna save a fortune, and then you deed the rest of the land to the town. And in concept, it's, I really support that idea. I just need to have all these things worked out, because right now, I just see a ton of problems coming, once it's approved, and I don't wanna deal with figuring it all out, you know what I mean? Like, right now, there's energy and push, and I'm sure if we needed to call the Town Council and get stuff drafted, if the selectmen are behind us, they're gonna say, go ahead, spend all the money you want. But after it's all done, and we're having problems with people, and we say, hey, we need to get Town Council involved, and they're gonna be like, oh, we like that, just leave it alone. It, it really just, I'm not saying that happened, but it has happened years ago. That's a whole different story, but, so I just want to be able to have those things answered squared away one way or another. So those people, when they buy in there, they, they're not, I don't want to pass. Because right now, if we buy twenty acres of land, everybody in the town pays for it. We all pay a little bit. I don't want some of these people with a, with a treatment plan or something else that costs them two, three hundred dollars a month. Basically, all we did was we passed the cost on to the people buying in there. They're going to pay for it, but they're not even going to pay for it at one time. They're going to pay for it forever. So again, if, if any of those solutions that you guys in town council come up with, that they could think any of those will work, either prove an allot with a well on a septic design or, or, you know, public water supply or shared septic systems or any of that kind of stuff. I'm fine with any of it, but I just, I, I personally feel that needs to be part of it from day one. So everybody knows what they're going to do. And also to be fair to the people that do it, if it does finally pass a town meeting, you know, there seemed to me there was a lot of subjective stuff in there. Like there's a lot of things that, that are at different discretion. And if somebody spends all that money and jumps through all the hoops. We had years ago, one of the animal inspectors and he fought with me, Nate knows for years. Why do you have stable permits? You guys are a good group of guys. You guys should just get rid of them. You guys know, you guys know how many horses can fit in a lot. You guys know. And I said to him, I go, well, you like us, but what if three guys come in that you don't like and they don't like horses? You know, then they can, it's so subjective, then everybody could say no. I mean, I don't think any of us on any boards should have that much power that we can just arbitrarily say yes or no to anything, honestly. I think if we're going to go through this whole exercise and have people in good faith, do all the extra parks to prove the lots originally, come back and prove all this stuff. I mean, I, I don't, I think, I don't think it should be that subjective. I think that it should be like if you, you know, it's like when you go in with a subdivision. Not you guys, but some towns, you meet all the requirements, you get twelve lot subdivision. Well, what if you only put in ten? Well, then change your regs and all, you know, and if that's how many lots it fits, then I'll put in ten. I mean, that stuff happens, you know, they're just going to arbitrarily, subjectively, well, we, how about ten? No, I put twelve, but I met all your regs. I'm not asking for anything. That's the kind of stuff, just because I sit on that side of the table a hundred times more than I sit on this side of it, that I, you know, I just like to, to point out.
And also I'd like to point out also on the septic locations, like you said, it looks all great on this piece of paper. But what if this is all downhill on the right hand side of the road and all these are walkouts? And your water is at thirty six inches because there's modeling like a lot of Lakeville, it's right below the B layer. And now you're going to put your septic at the lowest point on a walkout and you're going to have to put a pump system with your tanks twelve inches above the water table to pump it into your backyard, to have a mound in your backyard where the septic shouldn't be to begin with. Because it's a walkout, it should be in the front yard. But you couldn't put it in the front yard because these wells are in the front yard. There's a lot of, you know, and the hill might go up on this side. So then you're going to have to pump all these up a hill because this went up the whole, you know, pitch this whole property like this. It just doesn't work. I mean, in a perfect flat world, you know, all sand, water at ten feet, maybe, but.
Under those cases, the concept or even going back to the concept plan, Board of Health would probably say, wait a minute, there's some issues, so on and so forth. And, you know, maybe if it did get to the definitive plan, you would recommend the planning board not approve this because of those issues. You're not going to be able to, to get the separations. You're going to have to put wells in the back on some and in the front and here and there. So it's, it's not going to work. And so that, that plan doesn't move forward.
But legally it would work. So then we're in between the rock and the hard place of no one, it's not the right thing to do. I mean, face it, everybody in here has been on these boards for years. There's no more good land left on Lakeville. All the good stuff was picked through years ago by the generation older than us. Every subdivision, you guys must look at, that is exorbitant cost of. When I started, you put in a road, I mean, you literally dozed the road down a foot, put gravel in, you started putting lots in. I mean, there's no more, all the good land's gone. So every lot in subdivision you start off with already has issues. But, but again, with water, they go away. With a public water supply, they go away. With a shared septic, they go away, the, the stuff we're talking about. But just to leave it up to the developer and the homeowners and us to sort through these that come through, trying to leave it the way it is, I just don't think it works.
And we have neighborhoods already dinner, you know, that are already congested and we're constantly giving variances. And people ask us all the time, why do you guys give so many variances? We got no choice. It's that or condemn the house. And so when this initially went before town meeting, we were like, whoa, you know, like it's, it seemed a little rushed because we like, we got some questions. And I know, I understand the interest in wanting to have something simple that is understandable, but getting something out there that can, I, I don't want to be fixing stuff after the fact like Bob said too. And we deal with enough tight stuff. I mean, there's certain neighborhoods with this five thousand square foot lots or ten thousand square foot lots. And it's a nightmare for us to deal with that all the time.
Chris, if I could, I got a couple people that want to ask some questions.
Sure.
Nancy?
Okay.
I'm right up.
For Chris, would you just elaborate a little more on the agricultural part about nitrogen loading?
So the nitrogen loading part, so like, for example, you know, we have a lot of cranberry bogs in town. They, some people may look to do something next to this. This already way too much nitrogen is sitting in that bog. So you're going to add that to whatever you put in with all the houses coming in. It doesn't work as far as nitrogen loading. So we, and never mind other agricultural land where you're adding fertilizer. If it's remains active ag land, they're going to be adding fertilizer to it. It doesn't help with our nitrogen loading problems. So pulling that ag out of that open space part makes it easier.
But instead of something about manmade fertilizers not being permitted in, in the B P regs, but you could, let's say, leave a field for hay, right, where, and not add fertilizers and just give it hay. Like you got your field up in Betty's neck.
Well, actually, field up in Betty's neck, anything that's approved by the Department of Agriculture can go on that field. I've already been through that, so it's not all organic. And the cranberry bogs are even worse.
So that's approved, open space that doesn't have other houses and septic systems related to it. And just, and bogs hold that stuff for a really long time. So it's not like it's just going anywhere.
But yeah. When you speak to the nitrogen loading, you're talking about a leaching field as well as if the people fertilize their lawn. All of that combined with.
And I'm sure most of us know that there's fertilizer, not all that's stayed on that lawn. Most of it's going to the street, running down, it's going to the catch bases.
You guys referenced if it's a sloped parcel and it rains heavily within.
We still tend to wait on fertilizer, all kinds of stuff, and the public does, so.
And maybe Ed can speak to that also on the, I know he's, he pulled up regs from the DEP on the fertilizer and how it affects, how it dissipates, it doesn't, it has to get diluted.
Yeah, I mean, that's why they have the full forty per acre. It's like a conventional system doesn't really deal with nitrogen. You know, it deals with a lot of stuff, you know, it takes out your solids and things like that. But unless you're getting into wastewater treatment plants that can really reduce nitrogen, there are some onsite systems that reduce it somewhat. But that's how basically DEP deals with nitrogen is to say, okay, we'll just dilute it and spread out the houses. That's their solution to it. Like I said, they, they do push for wastewater treatment plants when, when possible. But what, so by going, you know, shrinking the lots down and still putting a septic and well on there, you're really pushing the edge. And like I said, I mean, we can put deed restrictions on the three bedrooms and stuff like that. But you got to think too, all of this, it doesn't stay where it is. Like as Derek was saying, depending where it is, it may go in that one. It may go in the neighboring subdivision as well. So there's, there's a lot of concerns about where the nitrogen is going, you know.
If I could, I have another.
Hi, I thank you for asking for this meeting. I think this is great. I think that this is something that could benefit the town and I think the more people that are involved, the better. Now, when I had met with Chris and Nancy and Ed, we did discuss adding some language. And I didn't know if you guys had had a chance to look at it, but we did make some changes. We talked about deed restriction with that thirty thousand square foot lot, that it would need state approval, compliance with state code. We added, we also added the three bedroom with a minimum of the thirty thousand, four bedroom, minimum forty thousand square foot lots. And so under this seven point, ten point seven, the preliminary subdivision and OSRD concept plan application process. On number four, we also got into discussion on this. And I think Chris brought up, you know, some great points about, you know, every lot on the concept plan, I guess, would have to show that it's parkable for every lot to then be able to develop it. Because we don't want to have like a parcel, a large parcel that couldn't be developed previously, now be developed, even though half of it doesn't park. So we did add wording to this number four. It said formal percolation depth to groundwater test shall be conducted on each lot shown on the conventional plan and on the OSRD development area. So I didn't know if, if you guys had had a chance to read through the.
No, I saw that. That was all something that we talked about and I agree with that a hundred percent. You shouldn't, if you get fifty acres of ledge, just because an engineer can draw this up in two hours and make a pretty picture, you shouldn't get to count all those lots. You, you need to go prove, and, and there aren't any more big pieces in town that, that aren't very expensive to develop, that I know of anyway. But it's, so that's all a given taken into what we're talking about. It's when you get down to the thirty thousand square foot lots, like the physical, like a, a round hole in a square peg. And how do you fit these all in the lots? And, you know, think about it, the lot's a hundred foot wide and your well needs a hundred foot radius. That means it's two hundred feet. So there's nowhere in your lot you can put it and not affect your neighbors. If you put it on a property line, you're going to wipe out that other guy's whole front yard or vice versa. If you keep it in the middle, now you're taking up fifty feet of each lot there that they could probably use. And that's hoping that the neighbors on the other sides don't put their wells in. And now you wiped out their whole area. It's, it's an actual physically fitting it is, is the real problem I have. And, and like I said, in a perfect world, you tell everybody septic's in the front and wells in the back. And it sounds great and I could draw a picture and it would work perfect. And everybody would say, oh, we're all set. But in the real world, that's not going to happen. All the lots aren't going to perk exactly where you need them to perk. All the wells aren't going to hit water where you need them to hit water. And then you have lots and if somebody bought it and is applying for building permit and now they can't, it's not buildable and we can't give variances for new construction. So that's why I said, so it either needs to have town water, it goes away. Public water supply, these issues all go away because all these circles go in one spot way over here. And now you can put septics anywhere you want. Or a common septic that's way down here, that it's like a sewer pipe runs down there, I'll tie into. And then the lots can put wells wherever they want and use up a lot more of their wells, their property.
So those items that you just listed, those are the only.
That I know of, yeah, town water.
The only way that you think that this could work?
Yeah, town water, public water supply, shared septic.
So should we look into those areas in town for?
So I think, and Mark, you corrected me if I'm wrong, that would require some language to allow either a common septic or a public water supply well within the open space. And I would then defer to Edward about a public water supply well. I believe there are some pretty stringent requirements on top of a two hundred foot well radius. It needs to be fenced in so that it sort of robs some of the open space. What are the, could you elaborate? And I'm sure they're all somewhat different on what those protections are.
Yeah, so the fence depends on how much yield. So if you have a ten lot subdivision, the fence there, that's your zone one, so it'd be pretty small. But if you get into these larger ones where you get like forty and fifty lots, you're going to get a much larger area and things like that. And so yes, the zone one does have to be fenced in, but it's also the outer radius, which is in, interim wellhead protection area, that's also even more nitrogen sensitive. Now, that would be great to put in the open space, you know, but like I said, it's a radius. So it's tough, like you would actually have to go into the open space, put it in the middle, fence it off and then do it like that. You couldn't just put it on the edge because half of that would be in your subdivision, you know.
Yeah, but you'd only have to leave probably a twenty, twenty four foot path going down to it through the open space. And you just have to put an easement there for service and maintenance. So you could, so you could just leave a strip, leave it gravelled so it doesn't affect drainage or anything. And you just have that one strip that goes out into the woods to where the well is. Or, and I misspoke, or you put the wells in and you get septics designed around them. And then you don't have to do any of those things because that would also answer that question.
No, public water, but it does require a licensed operator as well. So it's, you, you have to, like, so when you're talking about like.
It's frequent testing and monitoring required. There's a cost, that's a perpetual cost to the residents to have that.
But that's nowhere as close as a treatment plant, though. It's a treatment plant, we get to a small mine. So, I mean.
Which also needs a licensed operator as well.
So I think you guys were good with the, being able to perk it like a conventional subdivision. You guys would go to have that language. And like some of those suggestions we had made the first time you guys were all good with that. So I think the biggest sticking point is, is like language.
Physical layout to make it work.
Do we have like, do we have like a big closet that says, all right, if you've got a treatment plant and water, you can do this? If not, you can do some mix of thirty or forty thousand, but it's got to be approved. Like if you got to bring to us and show us the concept, then it's going to be approved by everybody.
Well, you only need one, you don't, you only need one of them. If you have water, you don't put it to a treatment. You only need either town water, public water supply or a shared septic. And it doesn't have to be a treatment because unless it, forty houses were triggered? Treatment plant, which is very expensive.
Yeah, ten thousand, yeah.
Well, we can allow shared septic though. So we could let different groups of houses share a septic and put multiples on there. So they wouldn't have to go over. But I think the, the trigger for a treatment plant on the same property before it's developed, I think would be forty houses. So I can't imagine there's many places out there that would trigger that. So then they could either do a shared septic or again, they could come in and not do any of those and just drill all your wells and then have your septics designed and, and show that it works. Just show us that it fits. And then we say, okay, now we'll give you final approval on the, on the subdivision. Because like you were saying earlier, the developer might run into something that doesn't fit and he has to move a lot line. So you can't give a final approval on the subdivision until we know all those things.
Until the water is in. I think the water would be.
Yeah, you put the well in and then you show, yeah, you don't get to show a whole septic. You, you put a well in and you say, and here, there's my perk, you know, I can put a septic there. Like we're all adults, we all know if it's going to work or not, you know what I mean?
But on that dairy, Bob, I mean, who's going to come in and actually go through all that effort of perking all these lots and go through all the effort of drawing the conceptual and then drawing this? And then go through all the effort of, I have to hope they get every well in to do this.
Well, that's, that's my question on that, to hope to do it.
Who's going to actually go say, I'm going to do, do that cluster.
But, but on the, but on the flip side though, if you take fifty acres and yeah, you got to prove all the lots, but half of them are on the land you're going to use, so those parks are already good. So you need twenty five more parks.
They're going into wells, studying wells.
I mean, you know better than me, how much a foot of road is, is the cost to build a road?
It's astronomical right now.
Three, four hundred bucks a foot, right? At least, yeah, olo. So if you can cut out five hundred feet of road and five hundred bucks a foot, you're going to say, I'll give you a couple of more holes. Right, really? I mean, I would. It, 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 you know, when people say they, they're not going to do that, yeah, maybe when you used to be able to put in a road for a hundred, hundred and twenty five bucks and say, yeah, I'll just go ahead, I'm going to do what I'm going to do. But now, I mean, the cost is so high and now your drainage is cut in half because you're impervious. Now you, well, maybe not half, I don't do drainage, I'm not an engineer.
Underground electric.
Yeah. Your underground, what's why it costs, yeah.
That's huge.
Yeah, it, it's like, so you're cutting down all those costs. So of course they're going to say, all right, I'm going to waste twenty five parks in the back that I'm never going to use. But I'm going to use the ones I got up front. I'm going to save a fortune on a road. The town's going to get some land for free and I'm just going to throw some wells in that I'm going to have to stop putting some in the front anyway. So, I mean, I honestly think it's going to work. Any of those scenarios, I think it, it could work. And again, I'm, I'm just back to that same thing. Those are the only, you know, I just don't want somebody coming and showing up here one day and they bought a lot and they didn't build for two years and their neighbors already built theirs. Now their lot's not buildable because they didn't put it in, do it exactly how it was supposed to go.
So Bob, what town did you say? Do you remember the town that required proving the wells or installing the wells?
The engineer told me about that. I'll have to double check with him.
Give me a call.
But I know the Middleborough does a hundred foot around. I know, what was that other town you guys were talking about? Sherborne's the one who allowed. Sherborne's the one who allows you to put a public water supply in the
Open space.
Open space, so that means they accounted for that, because they're saying you can put it in there, so that's in there, right? Yeah, I've read a lot, and I didn't, I don't remember everyone exactly, I was just trying to get a whole big picture of it. But I mean, again, that would be the only other way, because, because without doing that, you don't know.
I mean, because you start adding these things into water and sewer, septic, let's say, private septic and wells, and in all the good land, as you said, is now you're dealing with land of variable characteristics, some ledge, some clays, some high water table, you know? Your, your lots are automatically are gonna grow in size, and you're, you're gonna lose the benefit of a lot of the cluster in, in some of those cases, or you're gonna have a much smaller, um, you know, percentage of open space or something along those lines, I think. But it's still something we should continue to try and work on. Obviously, public water solves a lot of, a lot of issues, so.
Oh, you could do ten thousand square foot lots if you had, you know, well, if you had water in sewer, but then you could do, you know, ten thousand square feet of bedroom, so you could, you know, if you had water, so. But again, we can allow now, that wasn't allowed before, we can allow shared septics. So, you could hook up two or three houses and put them there in a certain area where it perked good. I mean, again, you'd have to do that, um,
Proprietyship.
Proprietyship. I don't know why that keeps sticking with me today. But if you can have that as a super lane, so the other people don't get screwed when it's time to fix it. But yeah, and, and I actually like the Middleborough idea of leaving the hundred feet all the way around it, because not only, because you're gonna have to ball field thirty thousand square foot lots. You're gonna go in there, this is gonna be ball field. By the time you put, Derek does this for a living, right? By the time you put your well, you grade around the house, you put your septic in, you'll ball field in that whole thirty thousand, so it's not, not gonna be a tree left. If this was a plan, there's not gonna be a single tree left in there. So, leaving that hundred feet around the edges, I think also was a good idea that Middleborough does. And again, like I said, that would help you, if your wells are in the back, it gives you another, so half of your radius now, your two hundred foot radius went down to a hundred foot, because you can still use, you know, you're not using it technically, you're not touching it. So, now you just cut the actual radius on your property in half of usable space. So, um.
Well, Easton does residential compounds, which is nice, too. We, you don't get to make lots out of it, but you do, it's a shorter road, you get a smaller lot size, and there's more benefit to it.
I got a question on the amount of lots. Is there any thought gone into how many lots you're gonna allow? I know, I think in a regular subdivision, you, we still only allow twelve lots on a dead end road, I believe, I don't know if that's still in there. Are, are you gonna remember? I mean, I know I did one of these, and I've done two of these in Middleborough. One was eighty-four lots. I mean, are you, is there any language in here that we're gonna limit?
It really depends on the acreage. It really depends on the acreage, and it's a fifty percent reduction. So, if you could, let's just hypothetically say, if there was a fifty acre parcel, and you could come in and put in nineteen house lots, eighteen house lots, based on the acreage of seventy thousand square foot lots, we're gonna let them put in seventeen or eighteen lots in the smaller space.
Whatever they could prove that they could do.
On the entire parcel?
But I mean, I think he's talking, though, now, you guys, unless he's got rid of it, you guys still have the road without a second egress, can only be seven hundred and fifty foot long, so that limits how long, how many houses you can put in there.
So, now you're waving all that and just putting, letting it go unlimited?
So, your original plan would only fit so many houses with two hundred feet?
Well, they may be able to show what two loads are.
Yeah, if you can loop it or something, yeah.
So, it's a bigger subdivision?
I just ran into that.
Foster, no, I think, be able to
Well, I think we allow it to wave, to be longer, yeah.
I'm just thinking also for nitrogen loading, I mean, if you were gonna go ahead and without, you know, getting that water issue of septic, and you still wanted to move forward with it. I mean, I, I think at least you should limit, um, if there was any thought of continuing forward with it, put a number, I mean, I just don't think you should have eighty-four lots with all that nitrogen loading on thirty thousand square foot lots, just because they had enough acreage to do it. I, I don't, I, you know?
I have a simple question. I, I'm sorry, I apologize, because I haven't been around here that long, but in, in the open space regulation, which I have a copy of, I think it's the last one, section seven point ten, one of them has dimensional design requirements. And paragraph two says that "The general location of septic systems and wells shall be shown on the plans to ensure proper distances can be maintained to protect public health, and the Board of Health shall provide guidance to the Board on the proper location of these utilities." So, I'm thinking that you're gonna have a say when that, when that plan comes before you.
No, because, because without doing that stuff, we're not gonna, we're not engineering the plan. I got this, I got this drawn in an hour and a half. It looks pretty, right? If you brought that into the Board of Health and said, "Yeah, this works," without putting the well in, you don't know if it works. Without doing your perk test, you don't know if it works. So, somebody's gonna go through the whole process of doing a subdivision, and go through all the meetings, and then start doing that and realize it doesn't work?
I think they have to. In order to get approval for this open, for this open space residential development district, they're gonna have to come
See, I'll go back to what I said before.
And get approval.
Before it gets approved, then they gotta put the wells and the septics in and prove that they can work. That was one of my options, that's, that's what I said, that was one of my options, the four options I said.
So, so that language he just read was in the bylaw from the springtime?
Yeah.
So, you, to make this word feel comfortable, you would like to add strength in language, and besides working on the technical issues that we've been talking about most of this meeting, okay?
And then, and then once that's in there, there'd be, need to be a deed restriction that it has to go there. So, if somebody buys a lot and decides they wanna build a different house and they wanna move stuff, nope, that's where it's going.
Right.
Unless you can come back and prove again that you can move it and not change it.
Okay.
Anyone else have anything out there? Need to add?
It's really quiet in the back room.
I know, Nate's the smartest guy in the room, come on, Nate.
I guess, I gotta go. Actually, it persists.
Yeah, yeah, you do.
Hey, you can't be at a meeting and not say something.
No, I, you know, just start by saying, you know, in the past, with the zoning bylaw review committee, this is how we've gotten stuff done. So, when I look around the room, I see an expert in every field, right? And this is how we do what's right for the town of Lakeville. We have a discussion, we hash it out, no good idea is gonna be one person's idea, it's gonna be a group of people's ideas. So, um, listening to you guys talk, and I, I don't know if this stuff's possible, but, you know, we talk about border health and septic systems and wells. I guess I would wonder if we could treat it like a definitive subdivision, where we put a covenant on all of the lots, we didn't release the lots until Board of Health approved those lots. So, you know, you might be in a scenario that somebody didn't have to do all of the wells and have them tested, and do all of the septics and have the designs. I mean, the preliminary plan, when you're figuring out how many numbers are gonna fit, you gotta do the perks on, but you don't have to put the wells in, you're just gonna put the perks on the lots. We come up with a number, they do the open space design, and then you only release those lots once a well is in and tested, and the septic system is designed and approved by the Board of Health.
But what if it doesn't fit there, though? Then are we gonna be non-buildable lots, or are we gonna let them start redesigning?
No, I think it would be incumbent upon the developer to make them work, but at least it wouldn't be on a resident. And I think that that's the crux of a lot of what you were saying before, Bob, is you don't wanna be in a situation where you get somebody buy a property and then find out they can't do what they want on it, or they're before the board, it's on the developer, they're not gonna, they're not gonna be able to close on a property, right, until they get that covenant released. And if the covenant's not released, because the Board of Health hasn't approved it, if it's a vacant lot, it's a vacant lot. And that's kinda what I put further on in what we, where you guys are talking, is do you make a provision to have vacant lots on purpose by design, so you could create a, a, you know, a, a utility easement on those lots in the event that there was an emergency need for, from a public health perspective? You know, somebody failed, the reserve didn't work for some reason, you could put a well on that vacant lot, so you might have five or six lots, and then you got a vacant lot, and, you know, you might need an easement to that lot, I don't, I don't know, but you, we're gonna figure out a way that, you know, fifteen or twenty years down the road, they're not before another board, as, you know, public health regulations get more and more stringent, we don't wanna be in a situation that they become more stringent, now nothing that we did now works, and, you know, all of our kids are sitting there saying, "Why did they do that?" You know, but I think if you created a covenant provision, I don't know if it's legal, I don't know if you could release lots individually like that on an open space plan.
In any subdivision, you place, you should be placing covenant on all the lots and then releasing them as, um, you know, in an orderly fashion, let's say, okay?
So, so the, so the first lot would get, get his, no matter what he did, he's gonna pass, because there's no other houses. Then we're gonna tell the next house, they have to design all their stuff with, with what they did, take it into account what they did, and then the next guy is gonna have to take into account what the other two of them did. So, and they're gonna come one at a time. But until you put the well in, though, you don't know if it's gonna work. That goes back to my other thing, until the well's going, you don't know, and now if you release some, if you don't perfectly go down the road in an order, if you release some, and now the guy's stuck in the middle and you're screwed.
Right, that's why your, your, your point about the town that did require them to install the wells before, in each section, let's say, or if it's a small one, the entire thing, so that you know that you're not gonna have that issue.
Yeah, put in, put in six wells, and then have the planning board release six, because we can approve those lots, and then keep going down, huh?
Release five. Don't, don't release the one that's then adjacent to the next grouping of lots.
Yeah, however you wanna do it, yeah.
That's the protection you're talking about.
Yes, and that has a protection. Or, because those weren't locked in yet and recorded, those other lots, like you were saying, if the lot had to get bigger to make it work, did still have that ability, one way or another. You know? Either way would work, however, that's, that's you guys' stuff, that, I'm, I'm only getting, I don't wanna be the guy, like you just said, that people are coming to me and say, "Why'd you do that?" Right? I, 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 you know? I don't wanna be the guy who said, "Oh, yeah, that old, that's just an overlay district on the hospital," and then we were fighting about warehouses and golf courses, you know?
I'm saying that during OSRD, that's nothing to joke about.
I didn't, I didn't, wasn't involved in that, and I don't wanna be involved in the next time it happens, is all I'm saying, so.
So, with, with a project like this, would you, would you typically see a plan approval and then lots be sold independently? Or do you think the developer would actually be building them to suit a buyer? Because, you know, that's the other piece, and I think that's to your point, if you sold a vacant lot, now the buyer has to get a well and a septic, and that's a problem. If it's the developer, I don't feel like it would be.
Absolutely. There's no developer that's gonna carry all these lots.
Yeah, I mean, I've seen both.
There's a different owner and a different developer every third lot. Nobody has, can not talk to each other, know if everybody's doing their own thing.
With their cookie cutter, to a degree, would somebody hold, take that gamble and hold on a bear, where it's just
It depends on the
So, so, so both happens. So, both, both happens. Both, the developer will do the entire thing, he'll go, "Look, I'm building four bedrooms, two and a half baths houses, and, uh, because of the way it's configured, my wells are here, my septics are all approved around the back, so however it is." Um, and one guy will go through and work to subdivision, sell them all. And then in others, um, which are more, that I've seen are more, um, custom lots, you know, there's open space around them, um, and then connecting and, and stuff like that. In one particular instance, there was two individual, like short little stubby roads and like three or four lots. Those were all sold as, um, to individual people, but they were bigger, more, um, nicer lots, so wells and septic, even though I think that had water as well, um, uh, really wouldn't have been an issue for, for
And I mean, you have to have the parks anyway, no one's gonna buy a lot without parking it. So, all we're really asking the guy to do is put in a well, and yeah, he's gonna spend five more grand, but he's gonna get five more grand for the lot, because now the people know they already have the well on it. So, I, it's, it's not a hardship in my eyes, asking the people to do that at all. If anything, it makes it more marketable, because some, somebody that comes from the city that doesn't know anything about wells and septic, gonna say, "So, I'm all set, my well's good, my well got tested?" Okay, I was that guy thirty-five years ago. And then, I asked your grandfather how you cupped the water, and he said, "Dig a big hole," and I was like, "Okay." And, uh, but, yeah, and that's, so, you know, so now it's, it's more marketable to the, you know, they're not gonna lose that money, people know what a well costs. So, and, and again, if you just release so many, either lever buffer, or, or whatever you need to do, as you go down the road, and then, like, that group gets blocked, and then that, and then if they start having problems, they run into, you know, we, it's like, this isn't like every five years, like, this is all the time. You did a perk hole right here, the septic system's supposed to be this whole table, you get ten feet over and it's junk, and you're starting to move it. Well, on big lots, we can just do field changes, we let Ed do it and we can go down and check it, but now we're gonna have to be making sure, you know?
Threaten the needle now.
Yeah, now we're gonna have to make sure that it can be done, still allow it, but like you were saying, I liked your idea, though, that they still have the ability to move those lines, and if they do those things, then they could sell the lot comfortably. If the well and the septic's on, well, the well and at least the parks aren't there, they can
Septic's designed.
Yeah, they can go ahead and, and they can sell the lot comfortably, and they don't have to worry about moving any more lot lines down the road.
I don't wanna speak for the planning board, but I, I, I was, I just moved here from Maine, not long ago, and I was on a planning board, and they, and we passed a cluster development ordinance in our town, and we had a builder come in with a cluster plan, and he, he came into the planning board with a very detailed plan, this wouldn't pass, it never, this never get anywhere. Each lot was, was identified as to where the septic would be, and he, and he perked each lot himself, and he did a test for the well on each single lot, and he came before the planning board, and that was, that was laid all out, and we had to approve that or not, and that's what he got approved for.
That, that's what we're talking about.
And that's what happened.
And perking for the septic, that's what we're talking about.
Yeah, and that's what, that's what should happen. But I don't wanna put, put anything out of everything.
No, that's exactly what we've been talking about.
But there has to be writing in this, to clearly say that, not just up to the Board of Health's discretion or approval, I, I just, I think it should be very clear.
And I think when we go to town meeting, I mean, yeah, I mean, we all know, right? This used to be cluster zoning, now we put a nice ribbon on it, call it open space, right?
Yes.
But, but that's good, though, because the whole world now is spinning PR, but it, it does get you that, and that's why I've always been in favor of it, it gets you that. And I think if we can go there and say, "Hey, we hammering all this stuff out, no one's gonna get stuck with three hundred dollar a month bill, or no one's gonna get this, no one's gonna get that, every well's, every site's gonna have a well and septic designed on it, that, you know, we can sit here and look, it's all in the face of town meeting, and say, you know, there's not gonna be any problems with the way this is," then it'll pass. I, I mean, well, honestly, I don't know, because I know a lot of people that say, "I don't care what you's doing, I'm not voting for thirty thousand square foot lots." So, so, I think if you want a chance of it passing, we gotta get it as close to perfect So, so I think if you want a chance of it passing, we gotta get it as close to perfect as we can so any people in the middle, you can sway them. But then, you know, there's still gonna be a ton of people. I was just with a guy right before I came here. And I, and he said, oh, what's the meeting about? And I said, well, the main thing we're doing is, we're not having thirty thousand square foot lots. I'm like, oh, he goes, I'll, I'll never vote for that. And I was like, they didn't wanna hear anything about it, they were just like, we're not doing it. And, and I get that because we used to have them and then we stopped because it did, we had problems. So, you know, that's where I am.
Lovely cottage neighborhood, I never should've allowed, but we do.
So based on that, I just wanna make sure, does anybody else from the conservation commission have any comments? Questions or concerns, anything? Anybody from the planning board? Uh, so I would say at this point, Mark will work on amending the language to address that concern solely. Uh, and we had some other things I think we'll probably amend. And I guess what I'm getting at is, I don't think we probably need to have another joint meeting. But Mark will circulate the document to us, we'll talk about it at the planning board. If we're satisfied, then we'll have it sent to you guys for comment.
Yeah.
And we, we'd be, you know, advantageous in getting that back. So we'd like to get it on fall town meeting if we could.
Yep, I'll come back and.
And maybe you lay it out like with those different ways. If you're in an area with town water.
Well, that's, that's what I'm thinking.
You have the option to do X, Y, or Z, you know what I mean? Huh?
Just make it a requirement.
Yeah, they have to come back with one of them, showing that they get all the lots. Nancy? I don't think I've ever heard Joe this quiet in my life at a meeting.
We're talking with border health tonight and those issues and we're here to hear that. But I think still, I have some issues from CONCON, but I think our board needs to talk about it before we say, oh, we're all fine with it. I mean, we're not voting or anything like that, but I'd like to talk to my own board. I'm not sure still about how that open space is being held. And I almost think that we need some legal advice on that, that to make sure. I'm just thinking about King Bartlett's property before where, oh, that's all, he can build that one house and that's all gonna be saved, it's under a covenant and it was twenty years and it was. So I think there are better ways to, I just wanna ensure that that open space stays open space. What's the point if twenty or thirty or even fifty years from now, that's not open space anymore? This needs to be in perpetuity and I still think there are some questions surrounding that.
When I was looking at options too for, besides the town or the, the land, or the, the butters owning it, you know, there's maybe some options for outside agencies that, you know, could maintain stewardship of it. So then you don't have to worry about going to town meeting and they're saying, oh, I gotta pay taxes on what? You know, that's a lot of people will say.
Nancy's the only one who can get why our land's trust to take anything anymore.
So, but Nancy, it's not just that, there's major conservancy and trustees and my agency and there's lots of other stuff out there, so.
It's just difficult because a lot of those agencies in this day, when the land is so expensive, they wanna work on, and the way to do it now is that if they have a piece, they'll add to it, which is what happened with you, is that they had another piece there, so just add it on to it. They're not real big at taking small pieces here and here and here and here, but it's not, I'm not counting that one.
These will be small pieces probably though, so that should be a little bit better.
Well, they probably will be though.
They should be, and I'm sure more than likely, they're probably right next to stuff, existing stuff already because that's why they're coming for this type of subdivision.
And if you go from seventy thousand square foot lot to thirty or forty thousand square foot lots, the lot's cutting in half, right? And the road's cutting in half. But, you know, you still get your drainage and all your other stuff that you gotta put in there. But I bet you'll get maybe thirty, forty percent, that's an engineering question, but I bet you get thirty or forty percent of the whole piece protected.
What I expected, some of the land is already next to stuff in protection because, and that's why it hasn't been built on.
Yeah.
I just got a quick question for Ed, I guess. Now with all the zone A's we have in town, um, do you feel some of this cluster zoning could affect close to a zone A, say, you could just be four hundred feet off the pond to get outside the zone A in certain areas of the pond. And they stuck this just five hundred feet just beyond that four hundred outside the zone A and put in thirty lots in the small area just outside the zone A. All that nitrogen molding, is that gonna affect?
Yeah, it would affect it, but tactically it would be legal. Like I said, you can't build in the zone A, but you can build four hundred and one feet outside the zone A. Yeah, so, and yeah, having that much, like I said, in a, um.
In which way though? The land sloping, if it's towards the pond?
It's almost always going towards the pond itself, so.
Should that be a concern for the border health as far as approving something like this?
It would be a concern, but I guess that would come up on, on one of those things where we review it saying, hey, how come you're so densely populated, you know, by the four hundred, the zone A? Whereas you have this other area, couldn't you just move it to the other area? I guess we could suggest.
But like doing like middle, leaving that extra hundred feet all the way around it would give you five hundred feet now before anybody could touch anything. So that would help with that a lot.
Yeah, we can, I can talk to Ed about some language if it's a body in the force, zone A.
That's, that's all, we just know we have a. Zone A, it's out, it goes way out. Are you amazed, you say I'm in a zone A? Five, four or five miles from the pond? It's like, yeah, now you're still in a zone A.
Could you re- require advanced treatment on, uh, so you took a, a, um, open space by law like this, could the border health or could you write within the bylaw that it would require advanced treatment of de-nitification? Would it help with those densities or?
I think it'd be a case by case basis, you know? Um, I don't know if, you know, you could, you could put it in the, uh, language that, you know, certain ones may require, um, you know, um, like, like I said.
Oh, not in a zone A?
De-nitification for their septic system.
New construction, so we wouldn't even.
I might say with that.
Then it's like about cost of the septic.
We could tell them what put it in, it'd be a waste, it doesn't count.
Um.
A new construction.
About what it's called.
Both ten thousand, de-nitification would be, bonus ten thousand, so you get a twenty thousand. Yeah, I mean, you get a twenty thousand, the dollar system go to a thirty thousand.
Right. So that said, uh, Nancy, with your concerns, would either you or Joe communicate to Bob to add this discussion to the CONCON agenda?
I think we can put it on at this point for the next meeting, she's doing the agenda on Friday. I already talked about that and she's kinda contacting Monaida.
But I think we wanna make sure that Mark is available too for that meeting. Obviously, I think we wanted to.
Next, next Tuesday.
Hear, hear their concerns.
Yep.
Okay.
Sure.
Yeah.
Okay.
See, we meet at six so you can go home early.
It's not tonight.
It'll still be.
No, not tonight, no. I haven't had a GAVI meeting in a long time. GAVI used to bet me how fast we could get out of a meeting. But to be fair though, back then, we had our office and we had people that prepped us. I mean, a lot of the boards didn't have, you know, people in the office. So we had our stuff a week ahead of time. Where a lot of boards sometimes don't get their stuff till the day of the meeting. So, you know, we, we were lucky in that fact, so we'd, we'd already know. I mean, like Derek said tonight, he called, he already called Jamie and asked him a question. We have the stuff so far in advance, we've already looked at it, we've called everybody. So when we get here, unless something comes up, we're not expecting, we can just plow through it. But if we were opening up all those plans for the first time tonight, that'd take a long time.
We don't even, we, we wouldn't accept the plan if you see that late.
Do you wanna bet?
Most, most of them will vote.
Okay, that's better.
Most of you that look at the plan.
We didn't vote on it. We, we didn't, we didn't make any approvals.
Yeah, we voted, you voted.
We didn't approve it.
Oh, no, we didn't approve it.
All we did was vote to talk about it.
Right, uh, look at it.
Yeah. Uh, so that said, everybody satisfied with where we're at tonight and we'll do the CONCON thing? All right, so I'll make a motion to adjourn the conservation commission meeting.
Second.
Have a motion in a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Uh, I also move to adjourn the planning board meeting. Have a motion in a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. We, we are adjourned? Do you guys need us, we don't need?
Nope, we're all.
You guys are good, right?
Yeah, we've sort of upped up.
For that, we're.
We got more stuff to go over.
They're done with us.
Well, thank you everybody for coming.
Thank you everybody for coming, I appreciate it, thanks.
I think talking face to face instead of going through the thing works a lot better.
Thanks, Mark, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Good night, everyone.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, we've still got a bunch on.
Next on the agenda is to discuss the status of Lakeville Hospital in regard to DEP and cleanup and other stuff like that. And I, turn that over to Ed first, or did you wanna talk about it?
Um, I'll, I'll just say, I, I had to ask to, to put this one on the agenda. Just as, I drive by it every day and, um, I, I know it's all in DEP control as far as the cleanup and the permitting and the oversight of that property. I was just, you know, looking for some sort of update maybe that we could get from DEP of, uh, where the permits stand as far as the cleanup of the property. Um, if there's a date they need to do it by, um, if there's a date the permit's run out by. They've, uh, another question was if they've done any further site visits to the property since they issued the permit? I know it's been in litigation, uh, since approval, so I don't know if they've still done any site visits to see if anything's deteriorated further on the buildings. Um, and then also on the landfill out back, I, I believe they have an issue on. Just if they've done any further inspections on that or if there's, I'm not sure if there's monitoring wells on that or not, I would assume there would be. But if they're still monitoring the, the wells around the landfill and, uh, just basically an update for DEP was just where, where everything stands and.
There are monitoring holes there, I know that.
Okay, just from a border health standpoint, I, I know it's under their jurisdiction, um, but, I would just like to see, I, I turn it out, I think Ed, you've already reached out to him, I believe.
Yeah, I, I did, I did speak about, to the asbestos person. Um, I don't know so much about the solid, uh, landfill part. Uh, but as Bob said, there are, uh, monitoring wells and they may be monitored, but they were being monitored by the private contractor who is releasing the information. Uh, I have not gotten any of that information as to what, uh, is, is, um, what they're finding in those monitoring wells, uh, in there. But like I said, they're, they definitely are there and they do have data on that. But since it's private, we, we really don't have access, we can't require them to, to release that information. Also, I don't, I know they have visited, I don't know when their last visit was. But they're, I, I do think they're okay with the property right now. They don't know what the next step is right now, I don't think anyone does, um, with the exception of maybe the owner, uh, who's trying to make a decision as to where they're gonna go. Um, whether it's, they're gonna try to continue with it or they're gonna appeal or they're gonna, um, um, sell the property as is to someone else. I don't, I don't know if anyone really knows that right now. I did get assurances from DEP that they will try to contact them and find out what the next step is. And once DEP knows that, they will inform us. But as, as to right now, I don't think anyone really knows what the next step is. It's fairly recently, I think the decision came down on Friday, so it's been less than a, less than a week. Um, so which is, and it's a huge decision, uh, for them to do 'cause they've already invested in.
It's still under litigation, so.
Yeah, yeah. Um, so yeah, we, we, when, when that decision is made, we will be notified of it. Um, but like, um.
But the buildings, I mean, just to ease people's concerns that may be watching, right? The, the big, big building of concern is the, the tall one out back, right?
Yeah, that's the most concerned. And then like I said, they, they are aware of what the status of each building is. I don't, like I said, I don't know when the exact last visit that was, but they're aware of it. And then, you know, they know what state they're in and everything. And, um, like I said, they, they do definitely want someone to, um, clean that up.
And those windows are covered, better than the ones you see from the street.
Yeah, the, the, the main building in the rear with a seven story building, those are boarded up, uh, better. And that's the most concerning building apparently. So, um, you know, there are other buildings with open windows, but those buildings are less dangerous from the, um, the, the asbestos, um, part of it, you know?
Do we know, did they save any timeframe they had? Did they have a timeframe they had to, uh? I know the permits were issued to clean this up. Um, and all permits usually have a start and an ending date. Did, is there a date they need to clean this up by or is this permit just expire at a certain date? Is there any way we could find that out or where that stands?
Um.
Or they don't even wanna release that to us?
I think they, they did give them an extra time, uh, I'm not sure on this, but, um, they, Rhino wanted to clean it up, the property owners wanted to clean it up as soon as possible, but they were stopped because of the litigation. So, I mean, I don't think, um, I don't think they can be penalized because they didn't clean it up because the, the litigation stopped them from proceeding. So I mean, you know, so I, I, I don't think, um, there is an end date as of right now. If there was an end date, it may have been adjusted once the litigation happened.
Okay.
All right. All right, thanks Ed.
Did you guys read the minutes?
I did, yes.
Did you? Well, next on the agenda is the betterment.
Oh, sorry.
It's okay. Betterment of, uh, yeah, so next on the agenda is betterment approval for Seven Woodview Drive.
Everything look like it's in order?
Yep, every, everything's in order. Signed it now or signed it later, but there's, um, all the forms and everything have been completed. Um, and the estimates are in, so.
I'll make a motion, we'll approve the betterment loan in the amount of forty-eight thousand, one hundred seventy-seven dollars and twenty-three cents for Seven Woodview Drive.
Second.
Any discussion? All's in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. I don't have any questions, I jumped past it.
And, uh, next on the agenda is the minutes.
Did you guys read them?
Yep, I was fine with them.
I'm good.
I'm good.
I'll make a motion, we approve the June first, twenty twenty-two meeting minutes as typed.
Second.
Any discussion? All's in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. And next, any, next on the agenda is, uh, discuss the recent border health agent pending items.
Um, there are no pending items.
Okay. And COVID updates, which is getting on the.
Um, for the COVID update, uh, there are still, um, a lot of COVID cases out there of the not really being, um, recorded because like I said, most people are testing at home.